You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
I ordered the December 4th meeting of the Swansea Planning Board here at Wickham Hall. I'll begin with the roll call. Scott Self, I'm here. Michael York.
Yep.
Richard Lane.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
Mark Scaler.
Here.
Jane Johnson, alternate is over there. Stacy Goodell, alternate. Charlie Harbeck, alternate. You're all sworn in, correct?
Yep.
Yep. And Selectmen's Rep. Mark LaBelle.
Here.
Right there. We have a full board. We don't need to seat any alternates. And I'll get on with the agenda. We have approval of the minutes from November 20th, 2025. And under public hearings, we have amendment number one, which is a wetlands amendment to the zoning ordinance. And then we have amendment number two through number eight, another public hearing. Discussions, other business. We have the excavation permit renewal for Mitchell Materials LLC and then adjournment. Going up to the top, I don't think there's anything on the agenda that we need to notify surrounding towns. Mitchell has already gone through the Winchester Planning Board and they've gotten approval there. So we don't need to notify them about it. So we don't need a motion for that. Moving on, going to the approval of the minutes for November 20th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the November 20th minutes.
Motion to approve by Mark. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Let's see, it's a tie there.
Sure, Richard.
Seconded by Richard. Is there any further discussion or clarifications?
Yes.
All right, let's hear it.
Two things. On the second, on page three, third paragraph down, where it starts with Paquette, the last line, where it says a 10-year period and expressed that the town, the town hasn't expressed anything yet, hasn't gone before the voters. I think it's meant to be town staff deals.
Yeah, okay. Clarification, town staff.
Town staff, yeah.
Okay. And.
And last, under E. I did not suggest anything about an ordinance. What I was suggesting was the review of rules of procedure.
Yep, you did. So we could just change ordinance to rules of procedure, Planning Board rules of procedure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Those are my corrections.
Those are the ones, okay. I have a clarification from the first paragraph on page three. And it about, let me see, one, two, three, four sentences down. Let's see, it says Chair Self explained that notifying the abutters would occur once a public hearing is scheduled. And we're talking about public hearing for a site plan review. So that should be clarified because we're talking about different public hearings there. So it should read Chair Self explained that notifying the abutters would occur once a public hearing for site plan review is scheduled. And then the last sentence. Once the, once the public hearing, and then just enter, put in for site plan review right in between there, and then it can say is scheduled. Two different public hearings we're talking about. And on the last line there, it says, it makes sense. And whether it has the support of the Planning Board to schedule a public hearing for the amendment. That clarifies the two. Anybody else?
Yeah, one other thing. In the first paragraph on, or the first paragraph of discussion on page two, where it talks about, it's like the sixth line down. The paragraph starts with Chad Brennan as the civil engineer. So it says this rezoning would be a benefit to the community and would provide. I'd like to attribute that to Chad because it's stated as if it's a fact, and we don't know that. So basically down in here, Brennan stated that, something like that. Just give, attribute the opinion. It's one, two, three, four, five, six lines down into this paragraph. Thank you.
Okay, Chad, Chad, does this rezoning?
Yes, yes, please, yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, Mark, you made the motion. Are you in agreement with those changes?
I am.
Okay. And you seconded, Richard, are you in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and those are done with. Brings us to public hearings. And that would be for amendment number one, which is the wetlands amendment to the zoning ordinance this year. And let's get down to it.
Chair, could I make a recommendation to do a new material first?
Recommendation for what?
To do a new materials first. It's just.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. That probably won't take too long. Yeah, that's a renewal of the application. Yep, yep. And we haven't opened up any public hearing or anything like that. Is the board in agreement with that?
Yes.
Everyone, yep, okay. So we will skip down, we'll skip over that amendment number one to the zoning. And we'll go down under discussion, yes.
I don't know if those mics are working, but it's as if you were just talking. We're not getting picking up any of the sound.
I'll bring it closer. How's that, is that better?
The mic's there only for the.
Yeah.
Oh, they're for that.
Oh, they're for that, so it doesn't help.
Is it okay then if we want chairs in the first row?
Yeah, yeah, moving forward. Okay, we're skipping down to number four, discussions and other business. And that would be for an excavation permit renewal for Mitchell Concrete, or Mitchell Materials, sorry, LLC.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Beeman with Mitchell Materials, All States Materials Group.
I'm Lou Vigen, Engineer for Dantus, working with Mitchell Materials Group.
So we put together in your packet, you have the request summary. So our permit is due to expire the end of this month. It's a five-year permit, so we're just simply looking to renew that. We've provided a copy for each of you for the proposed grading plan and the existing conditions plan. Hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that if you have any questions. All is pursuing excavation without any incident. Things are going as planned. Do you have any questions for us?
On the existing conditions plan, is that from originally? Are you down deeper than that right now? On the, let's see, on the next plan down, it shows a depth, you know, for, on the left-hand column there, for your progression on through. Are you through all those progressions, or are you to progression number one, two?
Nope, just so, it's kind of tough with this print, but you can see where they're currently at on that, that chart on the left. It's a fainter line that says existing grade.
Okay, I see that, so you're.
This is as of July of this year. There's a drone survey performed.
But it's starting at 485, right? And you're, now you're down to about 445?
Yes, down to 445.
That's where you are now. That's, that was my question. Just wondering how deep you were now.
Yep, that's the deepest part of the pit currently. So each of those steps, that's a 50-foot step.
And your plan is to go all the way down to 300 by the looks of it?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So you're, you're not very far down yet.
We submitted the reclamation bond, so that's current in full force and effect. You mentioned Winchester has approved their excavation permit renewal for five years. State AOT is in good shape, so you're our last stop.
And it doesn't look like anything has changed in the permit itself. I don't know, everyone probably had a chance to read it, correct? It's the same standard permit that we've had in front of us a couple of times here.
The one thing I'd like to see changed is the amount on this bond from 20, because that was initiated back in 2019, that amount. And I think the cost of reclamation has gone up considerably probably since then. And I don't know if we would need to get an estimate from the town engineer as to what it should be.
I don't know the answer to that one either. Do you have any comments on, on upping the bond?
So we had that discussion back in 2015 when the amendment to the AOT permit was made. And mainly because this was the, it's rock excavation. They chose at that time not to raise it.
And only because it's rock excavation?
Right.
And because of rock excavation, you only need $20,000 for?
It's not, it's not like a sand and gravel operation where you're going to be left with having to have material to slope, you know, leave remaining slopes to be seeded. These are going to be rock faces that are left.
So what would it look like for the reclamation? I'm just saying, you have rock walls there. What else do you do?
Yeah, import, loam, and.
For the bottom, bottom of the pit.
The bottom of the pit and each of those benches going out and then vegetate it.
Vegetate it.
The rock faces would remain rock faces.
Any other comments on that?
Just a question for staff. In the permit, it says that the site should be inspected twice yearly by the code enforcement officer. Do we do that? Do we have a record of that?
We would have to check with Mike, with Mike Jaffray, to see if a inspection has been conducted in the last two years. I don't know if this is on our code enforcement radar.
I wonder if it should be.
Yeah, I don't know if there are any triggers in place to require that inspection. So it might be good to put something in place for every two years.
Twice yearly is what the, the permit specifies.
Yeah, I don't know if they're, we don't have access to their schedule.
So anyway, I guess that's a request from me to staff.
Yeah.
If we can make sure that that's happening because it's in the permit.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So when do you see your first reclamation coming through on the first step? Because you're, you're only on the first step here, right? The 48, 445 by the looks of it, or a little less.
Reclamation will happen once the bottomization is reached.
All the way to the bottom?
Yeah.
Or isn't there something in there that says if you haven't, you know, taken any material off of a certain, for a certain length of time, you'd have to reclaim it?
So those benches will be roadways for machinery to get down there.
I got you.
Yeah.
I thought they were, yeah, something like that. So it wouldn't be till they got to the bottom. How long do you think it will be before you get to the bottom?
Well, for reference, there's about, in the Swansea side, 3 million yards to take out. And they're at about 700,000. So that's over the last 10 years. Quite a, quite a few more decades outside.
Yeah. I don't really see, Richard, at this time, that we should go through the process of upping that. Doesn't look like they're going to be utilizing that, or they wouldn't utilize it anyways. Only if they, they did not reclaim it, that would be a bond for the town. But that can be, I think, thought about the next time it comes up, another five years. It's taken them this long, 10 years, just to get down to the 445-foot mark there. And they've got a long ways to go. I don't see any, any board members want to.
Is there a way in improving this, but to make that a footnote? That it should be reviewed by the engineer in five years?
Yeah, let's put that in there as a, well, we can't really put it as a condition to approve it. It's either approved or it's not. I think it should be handled by, by probably code enforcement or staff in that regard. You know, as far, or a reminder in, in our notes with the staff there that we can look at it another five years.
So by the end of December 2030, you want to have.
Revisit that bond.
Okay.
Board members okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
I was going to just comment, I think if we have regular inspections, then we could probably get a better estimate of maybe what reclamation bond might be.
By our code enforcement, every, twice a year, I think it is. Yeah, Richard, you okay with that? Yep. Mike?
Yep.
I am. Brandon?
Yep.
Victoria?
Yes.
Okay, I guess.
If it was abandoned, then.
Yeah.
Then we would, you know, then we're going to say, oh, was that 20,000 enough, right? I don't think that's going to be the case, but that would be a scenario that, you know, would play out.
That's right.
Our, our other locations are requiring for reclamation bonds as well. So the 20,000 is in line with a pit that we have in Massachusetts. Winchester's is slightly higher. So that might be something you, you want to look at to compare it to.
Yeah, well, just to be advised, we'll be looking at it the next time.
Absolutely, fair enough.
All right.
So that would be wanting back to the new permit. I didn't change anything with this permit, so you guys can do it again. But line 19 of the permit proposed, it can read, "Study will be conducted to update the reclamation bond figure by December 2030. If found that it needs to be increased, it will, it will need to be increased prior to the next group." Something along those lines.
Yep, that sounds fine.
Are we doing the study or are you doing the study?
I think we can. Our tax department can probably.
Well, if you can do the study, and then if we don't like it, we'll do it over again. How's that?
I mean, we can make a recommendation.
Yeah.
If you have.
Let's talk after.
The wording, I just want to make sure we're clear on who, who's presenting the proposal.
It should be them.
Yeah, okay.
And then, then if the Planning Board disagrees, then we'll, we'll talk about it then.
And that's fair.
Okay.
Yeah.
There was another thing, I think this was going back a couple of years. But isn't one of your accesses right across from Greenlight Auto into the pit? I remember.
That's Kempton Road.
Yeah, is, is that an access into your pit?
No.
Because I remember somebody mentioning the 10-wheelers going through there at a fairly high rate of speed.
They're not ours.
They're not yours, okay.
Those are going out to the S U R pit.
Anybody else? No.
Quick question.
Yep.
The Liberty Mutual certificate references lot four, map 244, is that the old tax map?
That should be the new one. I think 86-1 is.
Is the old one.
That's our old one.
Okay.
Yeah, 86-1 is the old, map four, 244 lot four, I believe is the new.
Okay, then, nothing else? A motion? I'm sorry. Pardon me?
This is public hearing, so it's open to the public?
No, it's open to, it's a discussion, it's not a public hearing, it's discussion, so yeah, it's open.
So just clarification, we're talking about the gravel pit, that's Route 10 and River?
That's, I don't know about the river part of it, but it's down just beyond the Fendi, where Fendi's used to be, or?
Great, I mean, we are, right? You've got river carnage and Route 10 carnage. And it's partly Winchester carnage.
Yes, yes.
Right, there was reference to the AOT, so I just wondered which AOT, when was that AOT?
Alteration of terrain permit.
When?
So we submitted it, what did we submit, August? July 28th of this year.
Originally, the current grading plan was approved by AOT in 2015. And now it's every five years, there's a five-year update.
So we just did a five-year.
We did an update.
Okay, because I said when they issued a program, the advisory committee, and I did realize that this was coming up, and we haven't seen any revisions or applications, and so.
Yeah, there's been no changes.
Yeah. This is just a five-year update to the permit issued in 2015. So alteration of terrain requires every five years, we do an update. And it goes concurrent with the town of Winchester and the town of Swansea's excavation permits.
Right, and originally the LAC would have been notified in 2015.
Well, I was going to say, I haven't seen anything since the last.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the LAC notification is required for the original permit.
But not within the law. So my other question would be, so I'm guessing that the conservation commission hasn't seen this either. This is just, are there achievements from what's happened before? I mean, are you just getting an update?
It's, it's an updated permit. There is nothing changed in the site plan that we originally approved 10 years ago now, I think it is. Yep, everything is the same. And they supplied us with the drawings, but everything's the same. And the permit's the same.
So my, my other concern was, I know some time ago, there was a lot of feedback from people in Westport about blasting. And I just wondered, has that issue been resolved? Are there any more concerns from the people living in Westport regarding the blasting and the impacts on their properties?
So this is Chris Martin, he's the general manager of the, of the facility. And he can speak to, I don't believe we received any complaints.
No, we, we have one from a resident on Route 10. She came in, we spoke about it, we offered to put a site of breath instruments on her property. We followed up with her, she never replied. No, we, we have one from a resident on Route 10. She came in, we spoke about it. We offered to put a site of breath, uh, instruments on her property. We followed up with her and she never replied. That's the only, only thing that I'm aware of that we noticed.
And nothing from the selectman's office? You haven't heard of any feedback on that?
I live in Westport, I don't care.
Okay. But selectmen haven't heard any, any complaints that you know of? Okay. All set, Barbara?
Well, I guess if it's not any different than it was 10 years ago.
No. No, and it's gonna be reviewed another five years. Anybody else? Then a motion to approve the renewal of the application would be in order?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Michael to renew the excavation permit and second by Brandon. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, could you amend that to include amendment nineteen?
Include amendment, yeah.
Include the amendment.
Include amendment nineteen, that's okay?
Yeah.
Your motion, that's okay in your second?
Yes.
Okay. Including the new amendment nineteen, which will be worded by staff and we will see it before it's signed. I'll be signing that anyways. Yeah, so I'll see it beforehand. Any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us back to public hearings on amendment number one. And amendment number one has to do with the new wetlands zoning ordinance. And I will open up a public hearing for amendment number one. And the actual official wording will be, are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number one as proposed by the planning board to replace section seven of the town of Swansea zoning ordinance? With a new section seven in order to amend the definition of wetlands conservation district, establish revised provisions for permitted uses and adopt a procedure for conditional use.
Yes.
What?
Yes.
So, no, we're gonna go through the whole thing. So, cause this is a whole new ordinance, as you guys all know anyways, but nobody else here, but someone watching might say so. It begins with the purpose and by the authority granted in New Hampshire RSA six seven four, colon sixteen, seventeen, and twenty. And in the interest of public health, safety, and general welfare of the Swansea Wetlands Conservation District is hereby enacted to regulate the uses on those lands defined as wetlands. To prevent the development of structures and land uses on wetlands which would contribute to the pollution of surface and groundwater. To prevent the destruction of natural wetlands that provide flood protection, groundwater recharge, pollution abatement, the augmentation of stream flow during dry periods and valuable wildlife habitats. To prevent unnecessary or excessive expenses to the town to provide and maintain essential service and utilities which might be required as a result of abuse or inharmonious use of wetlands. To encourage those uses that can be appropriately and safely located in wetland areas. To preserve and enhance those aesthetic values associated with the wetlands of this town. To maintain ecological balances and conservation corridors along rivers, streams, and drainage ways. B, definitions. As used in this section seven, the following terms shall have the following definitions. Adjacent will mean bordering, contiguous, or neighboring. The term includes wetlands that directly connect to other waters of New Hampshire or that are in reasonable proximity to these waters, but physically separated from them by manmade dikes or barriers, natural river berms, beach dunes, and similar obstructions. Certified wetland scientist. That means a person qualified to delineate wetland boundaries and prepare wetland maps who is certified by the state of New Hampshire Board of Natural Scientists as defined by RSA three one zero dash A, colon seventy-six, two A. Encroachment. That means the advancement of property development beyond a set boundary. Pete land means a bog, fen, or peat swamp distinguished by peat deposits, waterlogged conditions, acidic soil and water, and dominated by spagnum mosses. These are rare communities that tend to be biodiverse, biodiversity hotspots, hosting carnivorous plants and other unusual rare species. Vernal pool means a naturally occurring or mitigation created seasonal wetland that supports breeding by specialized amphibians and invertebrates. It is not formed by routine human activities, typically occurs in a shallow depression, has no permanent outlet or fish, holds water for at least two months after spring ice out, and contains recognized indoor, yeah, indicator species. Identification and documentation of vernal pools in New Hampshire revised 2004. Vernal pool indicator species are, or they include but not limited to fairy shrimp, wood frogs, spotted salamanders, or Jefferson blue spotted salamander complex. These species depend not only on the pools for breeding sites, but upon surrounding upland habitat for other life requirements. Anything on that page? Anybody find out of order or need to be changing? Barbara?
I'm just, I wondered, there are references, under the definition of vernal pool, there's a reference to the idiom, uh, vernal pools, which, how that's presented. I mean, should that be in parentheses or it's just there? Is that, you know, as defined by, or, I mean, I don't.
I don't even.
I'm guessing that's where it came from.
Yeah, I think that's where it came from. I, I guess it, it could be in parentheses. You're, you're talking about where it says identification and documentation of vernal pools in New Hampshire revised 2004, correct?
I mean, it's sort of like there, but it doesn't tell you why it's there.
Yeah.
You know.
Would it be more clear if we just had the word, if we had the word source in the colon and then the title and?
Something like that, yeah. I mean, if you're just identifying it as a source or if you identify it as someplace you're working that they went or not, it's just, it's unclear, you know, since it's an ordinance, I think.
So shall we identify it as a source?
Sure.
So we can just add that in? That doesn't change anything? So we can just add that in? Pardon me?
One more word.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else? No. So let's go to page number twelve. We're still under definitions. This is wetland. Means pursuant to RSA four eight two A, colon two ten. An area that is inundated, I mean, yeah, inundated or saturated by surface or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support and that under normal conditions does support a prevalence of vegetation typically adapted for life in saturated soil conditions. Wetland buffer. That means the protected area adjacent to wetlands and surface waters in the wetlands conservation district, see section D two. This area is naturally vegetated, maintains a diversity of native vegetation, and remains unaltered by development at the time of construction and thereafter, accepting any area designated for permitted use or subject to a conditional use permit. The purpose of this area is to prevent erosion and sedimentation, filter runoff, reduce non-point source pollution, support flood storage, minimize downstream flooding, and protect wildlife habitat. Wetland setback. That means the district between a wetland and the nearest point to which any building or structure, parking lot, driveway, or other use can be built, see section D two. Now we go, go to C, district boundaries. The wetlands conservation district is defined as those areas of the town that contain the following. Wetlands of any size adjacent to surface water, vernal pools over 500 square feet, any freshwater wetland over 1,000 square feet, which includes marshes, swamps, bogs, and wooded bottom lands, and any surface waters, including rivers, streams, and intermittent streams, and the land under said waters. Two, determinations of the boundaries between wetlands and uplands shall be made in accordance with methods outlined in the 1987 U S Army Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual Y dash eighty-seven dash one and the regional supplement of the Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual, North Central and Northeast Region, version two, or as amended. Three, in determining the size of a wetland, any portion of a wetland on an adjacent partial shall be included. D, general provisions. In all cases where the wetland conservation district is superimposed over another zoning district in the town of Swansea or is less restrictive than the state law governing wetlands, including but not limited to RSA four eight two A, two ten, those regulations that are more restrictive shall apply. That's the end of that page. Any questions or anybody have anything on that page? Barbara, you have something on that page?
Under district boundaries for vernal pools, it says vernal pools over 500 square feet.
Yeah.
And I would argue that that limitation of 500 square feet should be eliminated. Vernal pools by definition, um, include where there are naturally occurring, um, wetlands that supports breeding by specialized amphibians, blah, blah, blah. And that's the value of a vernal pool. And it's not a vernal pool if it doesn't have those species in it. So if they have those species, then it needs to be protected. And limiting it to 500 square feet is, you're basically possibly eliminating some viable breeding grounds for those amphibians. So I see no reason why that 500 square feet would be in there. If it's a vernal pool that's less than 500 square feet and it doesn't support those species, then by definition, it's not covered. So just by definition, something that has those species in it should be protected. And I don't think that 500 square feet should be in there. And so unless someone can prove a rationale for keeping that in there.
Well, we, on the conservation commission, we adopted some of the, uh, thinking from some other towns where, for administrative purposes, we limited the sizes of the wetland portions that we were going to be looking at to protect. We limited the size of vernal pools to ones that are over 500. We limited the wetlands to things over 1,000. Things like that for administrative purposes because there's so many little puddles of water around that it might be counterproductive to try to protect all of those and to be aware of all of those. And that's, that was the reasoning behind that change. It wasn't that we didn't think they were important, it was just we were focusing on the ones that were more important.
Was something out of the state model ordinance? I completely agree. Um, but, you know, we were, we were looking for some compromises. Um, and it was something that the state model ordinance suggested.
I think so.
You know, to what they said, to limit to, uh, larger, more important wetlands. I, I agree that vernal pools can be very small and be just as important, um, especially locally, um, to amphibians. So I mean, I, I haven't protected every vernal pool, but it's, it's something that we, you know, if you're in your right mind, pass muster.
Okay. Any of the board members want to make a motion to that? If not, we're moving on. Yep.
Um, I, I would just like to say that if the intent is to protect those species, then this is, I mean, to take 500 square feet, a, a lot of vernal pools are not that large. And if you are indeed trying to protect that, the, those, these species and those numbers aren't being, vernal pools are being impacted and those numbers are declining, um, you know, we also have other impacts for these, these critters, let alone, you know, like road kills. Uh, you know, let alone impacting these areas. And just to say, to make it administratively easier? I mean, you probably wouldn't even know about this wet, this vernal pool until somebody comes up and does a survey of their land and notices the pool. And that's, you know, so it doesn't put any particular bonus on anybody administratively. It's not saying you have to go out and identify every vernal pool, but when you have a parcel of land and you take a look at that parcel land and it's coming up for review for whatever reason, then you will identify that wet area or that vernal pool at that point in time and determine if it is of value of significance, if it does have those features in there.
Okay. I'll ask you again. Anybody want to make?
I have a question. So, um, at this point in the review of the ordinance, if, if the public is, um, suggesting changes, there's, there's, it, there's not, like, it's not gonna slow us down, it's not gonna prevent us from going forward. We get, we can have two public hearings on this ordinance, right?
If we change something here more or less substantially, then we'll have another public hearing on it to go over the wording, rewording or whatever it would be. If we change the meaning.
Over 500 square feet was a compromise that we all came up with because a majority of us weren't for that and some of us were for it. And over 500 square feet was the general compromise that we all came up with and agreed on. Because 500 square feet, in, to quote Scott, was two parking spaces. That's roughly 500 square feet. So again, we thought, some of us thought that it was kind of ridiculous to count every single one of those and put a vegetated area around every single one. And again, that was the compromise that we came up with. That's why that's in there like that.
But if, if that small two parking space area is indeed producing.
Again, you're playing the what if, the possibility.
No, no, you know that. You know that. When you, when you see a vernal pool, you're able to determine if it is or not. If it's deemed that there are no species here or it's a monotonal pool and it's under 500 square feet, it's just a wet area depression, then it's not a vernal pool. It's not covered by a witness. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, we do. We see what you're saying. And I don't think anyone on, on the board wants to make that motion to scratch that out of there. So we're gonna move along. We've got a lot to cover tonight. Unless you have something new about that.
Well, I have just sort of a question on a practical level. I'm, I'm aware that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that there are no state map vernal pools in Swansea. When I tried to find them, I could not. So if you guys were, say, reviewing the project, um, and, um, you know, the developer had been required to map the wetlands and you're looking at the map, are they required to map vernal pools? Do they, do they ever appear on your plats?
Vernal pools? Nope. Nope. They have, not to my knowledge, they have. This is the first they've come up in this new ordinance there that you guys came up with.
I think they're probably larger than 500 square feet if they're on a, a site plan. Which you get the 500 square feet below if they're not on a site plan. I don't think anybody's gonna catch that, uh, because we don't have any data on our D I S.
That's what I'm saying, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I, I guess it's kind of tough, um, to verify.
I think if we, if we had some that were officially mapped, it would be easier to deal with it, but that's, it's a problem.
Yeah, it is one of those things, yeah.
But if you have, that's the weapons scientist going out to delineate the wetland, that same person could identify the vernal pool. They could, yeah.
And, and they might. I, I haven't pulled any scientific history to compare on it.
Richard?
If someone comes up or goes into a plot of land and they are going to do some development or something like that, and they come across the pool, do we not have under, under conditional uses or exceptions that we can handle this as to the size?
No, that's not mentioned. We'll get to that, but I don't believe that that's mentioned at all. The conditional use has to do with the encroachment upon a vernal pool over 500 square feet.
But I think what they're, maybe I'm completely in left field, but I think their concern is if something were to go in and develop or change something within that area, that's the concern with, you know, whether it would diminish the, whatever.
I think their concern is that there are smaller vernal pools around. I think that's what the concern is. And there, there probably are. But it was too restrictive, the board felt it was too restrictive to restrict every one of the small little puddle of water or something that they couldn't do within, you know, put something within 50 or 75 feet around it. That was the problem.
Again, but to do, we have a process to get around that, which is further into the regulations.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, in the, in that part of it, yeah, we do. Yeah.
I think there's, you know, remedy.
Are you making a motion?
My thought is that the state still protects small wetlands. It's still against state law to fill the dredge any size wetland, correct?
Without a permit, yeah.
Without a permit.
Yeah.
Which would apply to vernal pools if the state was aware of them, I think.
So what Sherri's saying is that if, if in the course of the development, looking at the plot and seeing a vernal pool there, all of a sudden, the more restrictive state regulations might apply over the, as a more restrictive regulation over what the Swansea ordinance is, which means that. over what the Swansea ordinance is, which means that the main idea is that it gets identified. If it does get identified, then we don't have to have it in our zoning ordinance because the state ordinance would kick in as the more restrictive one. So once again, I'm not sure we have to change that, but we do have to make sure that when somebody looks at the wetland and delineates the wetland, that they identify vernal pool. And then you folks can decide how that needs to work with the site plan.
Typically, that would be how it would be done.
I would also say though, that the state does not, if the state says you can't work, then you can't destroy your vernal pool or you can't work in a vernal pool, but it doesn't say anything about buffers. And Swansea's ordinance talks about buffers. So that would be the, the difference between state enforcement and Swansea enforcement.
Well, I think we're moving on. We're just keeping going around and around. Unless there's a motion that we're going to strike that, then we're moving on.
Then I have a comment, um, as follows. Let's see, um, a thousand square feet, again. Uh, I think what's more important is the value of the wetland and not the size of the wetland. And I think, you know, one has to, I, I would say to remove that size restrictions on wetlands just as the state recognizes wetlands based on the soil and the delineation of the vernal court manual, that that's what we should be using and not saying just because it's a thousand square feet that it's not of value because that might be very important to that particular area, you know, that little network system. But you've just said, whoops, it's a thousand square feet. Not, not, not important. So it's, it takes away the value and the function. We, you need to look at the function. How is that functioning there? And not just put a size in there. So I would say you need to eliminate or definitely decrease, but I would go for eliminating the size restriction.
Again, we're trying to balance private property rights with the wetlands regulations is why that's in there too. And it was a compromise or a balance between the two.
Well, another reason for the compromise is that, I think the thinking is that these wet areas that are beyond these specified dimensions would be the ones that would be subject to a buffer or a setback requirement.
So that's great.
So, so, yes, so that's, and so we had to decide at what point do we start to require buffers or setbacks? And the thought was if, if we required buffers and setbacks for all wet areas, it would be politically impossible to get any buffers or setbacks in town. That was my thought. So a compromise was, was necessary to protect the larger areas with buffers and setbacks. Because there's, at the last iteration of this ordinance, there was not the, the stomach for having that additional level of protection. So I don't think, I, I think some members of the board totally agree with you that it would be nice if we continue to use our original definition of wetlands, which said all, which, this is the definition that's been on the books for like forty years. Any freshwater wetland which includes marshes, swamps, bogs, vernal pools and wooded bot- bottom land. So that's what you're saying. You're saying any wetland. And I agree with you. However, I don't think we can, it, it appeared from our last year's conversation and arguments and whatnot that we wouldn't be able to put buff, to recommend buffers and recommend a conditional use permit process for evaluating those buffers or setbacks on every single wetland in town. So that's the compromise.
Barbara, this is one of those decisions that neither side was happy with. This is a compromise and that's why we, that's why we got to this. We couldn't get to this last year. This year, we got to.
Scientifically, you're completely correct. There's no doubt that what you're saying is scientifically correct, okay?
But I'm just saying, by putting those limitations in there, it's contrary to the purpose of the ordinance. The purpose of the ordinance is to prevent the destruction of natural wetlands which provide flood protection, groundwater recharge, pollution abatement, the augmentation of stream flow during dry periods, and valuable wildlife habitat. That's the criteria you should use in terms of putting your limitations, not size. Because this might very well be groundwater recharge or pollution abatement in that area. But it's like you're not supporting your purpose of the ordinance by saying, well, we'll just put it as aside. And it's not taking in the function of the wetland or the vernal pool. So it's contrary, contrary to your purpose to be putting those restrictions in.
It is, but it was, again, balancing private property rights with restricting use around the wetlands. We haven't had that, those restrictions in this town, any, any setbacks or the buffer zones. And if you, you know, want setbacks and buffer zones, that was the way to do it, to compromise that way. So every single little wetland in town, you wouldn't be restricted from doing anything around. That's why it's there. And.
Well, then you, you know, you might as well throw out the ordinance because it's, it's contrary to your purpose.
Well, any motion to throw out the ordinance?
No, not really. Not really saying.
Oh, okay. I'm misunderstood. Never, never mind.
That would happen if this ordinance is defeated in March.
Yeah, that's right. So is anybody making a motion to scrap the one thousand square foot freshwater wetland? If not, we're moving on. Moving on, page thirteen. And we are still under general provisions. And it says, "For all wetlands over ten thousand square feet, peatlands over one thousand square feet, vernal pools over five hundred square feet and wetlands of any size adjacent to open public water, the following shall apply. All uses not permitted in the wetlands conservation district shall have either a specified setback from the wetland or be placed outside of a naturally vegetated buffer, choice to be made by the applicant. Where such buffer exists in a naturally wooded condition, at the time of development, it shall remain as such. A. In the rural agricultural residence, business and commercial industrial districts, uses not permitted in the wetlands conservation district shall have a seventy-five foot setback from the wetland or be placed outside of a fifty-foot naturally vegetated buffer. B. In the industrial park, village business district one and village business district two, uses not permitted in the wetlands conservation district shall have a fifty-foot setback from the wetland or be placed outside of a twenty-foot naturally vegetated buffer. Three. Buffers or setbacks of greater width may be required when a wetland abuts a slope of ten percent or more. Number four. In the event that the selectman, conservation commission, planning board, zoning board of adjustment, code enforcement officer or the health inspector showing just cause questioning accuracy of a wetland area on a specific parcel of land, the accuracy of the boundaries shall be determined by a certified wetland scientist with associated costs to be the responsibility of the applicant. Number five. Any lawful use of buildings, structures, premises, land, including mowing or parts thereof existing at the effective date of this section or amendments thereto and not in conformance with the provisions of this section shall be considered to be a non-conforming use. Any non-conforming use may continue and may be maintained or repaired. Move to E, uses permitted. Provided that all required permits have been obtained, the following uses are permitted in the wetlands conservation district without a conditional use permit. The wetland conservation district shall be maintained in a natural state to the maximum extent possible. A. Construction of wells for water supply. These are permitted uses. B. Wildlife habitat development and management. C. Conservation areas and footpaths, footbridges and boardwalks providing for pedestrian recreational uses such as fishing, hunting, hiking, bird watching and nature study. D. Open spaces as permitted by subdivision regulations and other sections of the ordinance. Now, anything on that one, Barbara? I knew you were going to be up. I didn't even look, but I knew it was going to be up.
All these numbers again were compromises.
So, let's hear it. Let's hear it.
So, um, under two A and B, um, so A has more restriction than B? And I'm wondering why an industrial park would have less restriction than the ROA, the residence business industrial? So just what the rationale was for the less restrictive?
I think because it affected the industrial park more. Because we, we had a few lots up in there that, um, if it had gone through without that on there, they would never even be able to develop the lots because of setback issues.
And village district?
I'm not sure about village district. Jay may be able to answer that one. I don't know.
I, I think, again, I think the reasoning was that those districts in town were designated for the development of, of more economically oriented structures and therefore were of value to the town that is balancing against the value of the, of the wetlands. And particularly with the industrial districts and the village business districts, the idea that, um, these areas were, were just determined to be where development would occur meant that we needed to, we need to make that possible. If, if we had the seventy-five foot and the other in the industrial park district, we couldn't build there. And the idea was that we would not want those restrictions in the, in the, in the village business district and the other as well. It, it, it still means, of course, that whenever the planning board looks at something like this, they need to consider what's going on and how that, how that's handled. But as an ordinance, it was supposed to make it easier for development in these particular areas. If those areas are not zoned correctly, then that needs to change. But given the zone that we have, certain things are permitted there. And to then have this ordinance remove the ability to build those things there didn't seem to make sense.
Frankly, I'm just curious. You said it doesn't mean that the planning board doesn't look at that. But they, they can't do anything if it's written here. They have to accept where they're, that those limitations.
Yes, but they, they can pay specific attention to things like drainage plans and other things that are part of, part of the building plan, the site plan.
Well, but they would do that anyway.
They would, but it's even more important that, that this be.
It's, it's to not, you know, handcuff the town entirely with a wetlands ordinance, you know, that too. And, yeah, the planning board looks at all those things and the conservation commission looks at all those site plans as well. And if they have concerns about it, they bring it to us and we discuss it then and go from there.
I think also the village business districts were, they're already densely populated, right? So what are the opportunities there? You know, the fact that there is, you know, there's so many non-conforming lots and stuff in all these places already.
But does the populated means more potential for that?
Well, the, in terms of the, in terms of the village business district one and two, the, the potential for business development is very small. That's one of the reasons those districts are village business districts, they're not business districts. There's, there are very few lots that anything can happen.
And they, and those wetlands or vernal pools or peat bogs or whatever in those districts have survived all this time without any setback regulations at all. So this is better for those areas, if you look at it that way.
Well, that doesn't mean some of them come along and they do something to.
Right, but it doesn't mean that they can.
There's also very, there are very few wetlands in those areas.
Yeah. I think we felt like, yes, there were a few wetlands there, um, because the areas were already more filled out and the wetlands that are there have already been pretty heavily impacted. Um, so we felt like we had more opportunity to make more difference in the other zones in town for the wet.
Anything else on that page?
One more. Number three. It says buffers or setbacks of greater width may be required when a wetland abuts a slope of ten percent or more. So to me, that's like, okay, that's like a big wide open statement. Um, buffers or setbacks or greater width may be required. I mean, but what parameters are there?
It'd be a case by case basis. There are no parameters for that. It'd be in the site plan if the conservation commission had a concern about it and had made a recommendation that we brought to the planning board and we would look at it underneath number three.
So if this, wide open?
Wide open.
When you say a, a greater, it doesn't matter. It could be ten feet more, it could be a hundred feet more.
Or it could be none.
Well, it will, it's a greater.
I can tell you, I can tell you, Barbara, if we're looking at it from the conservation commission point of view, we have some cables from other towns that we can use to, to identify areas and we would say to the planning board, we think this is appropriate.
But I'm just wondering in terms of the legality.
It's, it's good. Cordell already wrote this over twice. You know, our, our lawyer, our, our town lawyer, Cordell Johnson, he's already wrote this over twice. He's gave all of us the consent.
So it could be wide open. It doesn't have to be more.
I think that if it's both, both planning board and conservation commission.
So we won't get taken to court if we?
Cordell would have mentioned it.
Some of this, some of this might depend on the nature of the soils. It is wide open. Whether, whether, whether there needs to be more buffer.
There's nothing to support you if you, other than to say you're allowed to do something greater and you wanted to add another twenty-five feet because of soils or whatever.
It's, it's more of a restriction we're talking about, Barbara. We aren't talking about allowing the property owner to get away with something. We're talking about putting more of a restriction on the property owner.
I know. I'm just saying, there, it's, it's wide open.
It is wide open, but, but it's wide open because it allows the planning board to increase that setback if the conservation commission will say has a problem with it. And, yeah, we may get sued, but there's nothing anywhere that says you can't get sued. You can get sued for anything. You know, it depends on what your case is as to whether you're going to win or not being sued.
You're comfortable with it, I guess.
We might say, what we think the developers should engage a scientist to determine what a reasonable buffer size would be or something like that.
Or you would.
And we could just take that out. I mean, you know, if you have a concern about it, anybody wanting to vote to take that out?
I just wondered, thought you might need something a little bit more substantive to support any decision you would make.
I don't think you want to tie the hands of the planning board. I mean, it says we may do it, so.
This, this allows the flexibility to be either more restrictive or.
A lot of those.
Yeah. Anything else? Then we're moving on to page fourteen. And we're still under permitted uses. And this would be E. Forest management and tree farming, including any associated access roads within seventy-five feet of any wetland. These uses shall employ techniques as set forth in best management practices for erosion control on timber harvesting operations in New Hampshire. New Hampshire Department of Resources and Economic Development, two thousand and four, as it may be amended. Item F. Agriculture, including grazing as defined in RSA twenty-one colon thirty-four dash A. Within seventy-five feet of any wetland, agriculture shall follow recognized soil and water conservation practices, including the protection of wetlands and groundwater from pollution caused by fertilizers, mineral storage, pesticides and herbicides, as set forth in best management wetland practices for agriculture in New Hampshire Department of Agriculture. Item G. Maintaining, repairing or replacing existing and lawfully located structures, public utilities, streets, roads and accessways provided that the work conforms to the general standards in this section. H. The removal of invasive, invasive species as identified in the USDA for the state of New Hampshire. Scientific research and educational activities. Construction of a structure no larger than one hundred square feet with at least a fifty-foot setback from the wetland. Two. Permitted uses are presumed to be consistent with the protection of wetland functions and values when in accord with the following prohibitions. Permitted uses should not obstruct or change the flow of water. They should not alter the natural contour of, or the surface configuration of the wetland. They should not involve filling, dredging or draining of the wetland. They should not result in the pollution of the wetland, surface water or groundwater. And they should not involve substantial clearing of vegetation except for the purpose of agriculture or forest management in accord with the best management practices. Now we come down to F, which is conditional uses. Any activity within the areas, areas under jurisdiction of this ordinance, including any designated buffers or setbacks, that is not listed as a permitted use in section seven, article E, is presumed to negatively impact the functions and values of the wetland unless the applicant can demonstrate otherwise. The following, the following may be allowed in the wetland conservation district or any adjacent designated buffer or setbacks through the issuance of a conditional use permit by the planning board. Now, these uses would be structures. And under structures, it's new structures on lots where there are no previously existing non-conforming structures. B. New structures on lots with non-conforming structures or additions to legally pre-existing structures, provided that there is no encroachment closer to a wetland. Two. Streets, roads and other accessways, including driveways, sidewalks and bridges. Three. Impervious services and activities which result in soil compactation, such as parking vehicles or heavy equipment. Four. New or expanded utility systems, stormwater. management systems, and rights of way or easements associated with the systems. Five, restoration of a previously disturbed area within the wetlands conservation district. And I'm going to continue down there until we get to the criteria. On the next page we have also man-made ponds as permitted by New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, water impoundments, dry hydrants, and fire protection ponds. Seven, expansion or change of an existing non-conforming use or renewal of the use after it has been discontinued for twelve months or more. Eight, removal of trees, stumps, and root systems. Now, anybody have anything on that whole section there?
There's just to be, I follow the very first line on page where you started.
Yep.
It's a little dash before the word within.
It's probably a former strike through, just lingered.
Okay, that's just a small thing to take out. Adam can take that out? Okay, we're moving on to conditional use permit criteria. So. A conditional use permit may be granted for conditional uses as listed in section F in the wetland conservation district or any adjacent designated buffer or setback when all of the following criteria have been met. The land is reasonably suited to the use, activity, or alteration. Two, there is no reasonable alternative location which would avoid encroachment into the jurisdictional area. Three, encroachment into the jurisdictional area has been minimized to the maximum and extent possible, including reasonable modification of the scale or design of the proposed use. Four, the proposed, I mean, the proposal is the alternative with the least adverse impact to areas under the jurisdiction of this section. Five, the nature, design, siting, and scale of the proposed use and the characteristics of the site, including but not limited to topography, soils, vegetation, and habitat, are such that, when taken as a whole, will avoid the potential for adverse impacts to the wetland resource. Six, the proposed use shall not have any adverse impact on abutting properties. Seven, the wetland conservation district and any designated buffer is maintained in a natural state to the maximum extent possible. While unsafe or diseased trees may be removed, stumps and root systems must be left intact in the ground. Where there has been disturbance or alteration during construction, revegetation with native species may be required by the planning board. Number eight, in determining whether or not the conditional use permit will be granted, the planning board shall consider the following to determine whether allowing the proposed encroachment will result in an adverse impact to the area. A, the size, character, and quality of the jurisdictional area being encroached upon. B, the location and connectivity of said area in relation to other wetlands in the surrounding watershed. C, the nature of the ecological and hydrological functions served by said area. D, the nature of the topography, slopes, soils, and vegetation that encompass the said area. E, the role of said area in mitigating soil erosion, sediment, and nutrition transport, groundwater recharge, flood storage, and flow dispersion. And F, the extent to which said area serves as a wildlife habitat to travel corridor. I'm going to stop right there. Is there anything on, under the conditional use criteria that we're looking at here? If not, I have something that should be probably moved. So when, this is a criteria for issuing a conditional permit, and on number seven, it talks about, says while unsafe or diseased trees may be removed, stumps and root systems must be left intact in the ground. But as we discussed in another meeting, that if you're putting in an accessway or fixing accessway or a road, you have to remove stumps and root systems from the ground. So we had that as a conditional use. But if you have that as a conditional use, it was a new number eight in conditional use, and the criteria says you can't have it, it contradicts one another. So I'm proposing that we move that part of it, which says, again, I will read it over, while unsafe or diseased trees may be removed, stumps and root systems must be left intact in the ground. I'm saying we move that to general provisions. And it would state, while the same thing, under general provisions, it would state that the root systems and the stumps cannot be removed from the ground. Then, if you want to do it, then you can get a conditional use permit to do it. So it pretty much takes care of it, but it doesn't contradict itself, because you do have to give the relief to remove some of those things, otherwise you'd never be able to put a drive or something in there without removing the stumps and stuff.
Okay, that becomes number six under general.
Yeah, I think you're right. Let me take a look. I didn't make a notation. Yeah, it becomes number six, yeah, under, under general provisions. So we're just moving it from one point to the other, which doesn't really change the meaning of the ordinance at all. It just says that you, it says that you cannot do that unless you get a conditional permit.
There was a contradiction. The only other way to do it is to change the language in the, in the, in the criteria and say that you can only, you'd say it can't be removed unless it is deemed necessary to remove it, which is too torturous, I think you're.
I think conditional use permit for it would be, would be cleaner way to do it.
Yep, I do, I agree.
Okay.
So you're going to leave in the following sentence where there are a disturbance or alteration, because it says may be required.
Oh, yeah, no, it's just that one sentence about the unsafe diseased trees may be removed and some, and moving that to general provisions, which says that, you know, the stumps and root systems have to remain in there unless you get a permit otherwise. Anybody have anything on that?
That's a good catch.
Okay, thank you. Are we moving on? Yeah, we're moving on. We're going to conditional use, conditional use permit application procedure. So, the applicant is required to provide a detailed plan to the planning board showing the proposed encroachment into the wetlands conservation district and any designated setback or buffer, and any information necessary to demonstrate that the proposed encroachment will not cause adverse impacts to the wetland system or design details that demonstrate that proposed mitigation will prevent adverse impacts to the wetland conservation district. Two, again, under conditional use, the procedure, upon receipt of an application for a conditional use permit under this section of the ordinance, the planning department must forward the application to the conservation commission at least five business days before the commission's next regularly scheduled meeting. Number three, after receiving an application for a conditional use permit from the planning board, the planning department, the conservation commission will review the application and submit advisory comments to the planning board at least five business days before the planning board's next regularly scheduled meeting. This review will be based on the conditional use permit criteria outlined in this article. Number four, if after reviewing and commenting on the application, the conservation commission identifies a need for additional details regarding the scope of the work, the planning board may at its discretion require review by a qualified professional, such as a certified soil scientist or engineer, in accordance with RSA, oh, that's period, stop. Now, in accordance with RSA six-seven-six colon four B, the applicant is responsible for any associated costs. Number five, the board shall act to approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove the completed application within sixty-five days, plus thirty days for developments of regional impact, of acceptance, except, except as otherwise provided in, in site plan review regulations. Approval or disapproval shall be by affirmative vote of the majority of members present. Number six, planning board decisions on conditional use permits may be appealed directly to the Superior Court, RSA six-seven-six colon five-three. Special provisions, no leach field or dry well may be located closer than seventy-five feet to any wetland as defined in section B of this ordinance. Number two, wetlands as defined in section B of this ordinance will not be used to satisfy minimum lot area and setback requirements and may not be used when applying a residential density factor. J, areas exempted, wetlands associated with currently functioning and man-made ditches and stormwater treatment swales, sedimentation and/or detention basins or ponds, agricultural and irrigation ponds or swales, fire ponds, cisterns, and related facilities. To be exempt, such features may not have been constructed as part of a compensatory, yeah, compensatory, no, I got that one wrong too. Yeah, compensatory, mitigation or created in what were previously jurisdictional wetlands. Number two, under area exempted, again, wetlands associated with fourth order streams and designated rivers, lakes, and ponds covered by section eight, shoreland protection district. So, on that last page there, anything? Barbara?
Guess which one?
I have no idea.
All right, so special provisions, number one. No leach field or dry well may be located closer than seventy-five feet to any wetlands as defined in this ordinance. I would advocate for that to be one hundred feet. Our ordinance is one hundred twenty-five feet, which we fought for a long time ago. But, I mean, it's based on recommendations, there's this book called buffers for wetlands and surface waters that I've heard in some municipalities. And I mean, it says a hundred-foot wide buffer is more reliable with removal rates generally sixty percent or higher in terms of things like nutrients and sediments, phosphorus nitrates. I mean, so when we're talking leach fields, they're recommending a hundred-foot buffer. If sixty percent removal is acceptable as a minimum pollutant removal rate, a hundred-foot buffer will probably provide an acceptable level of water quality protection, and they would advocate for more if it down to special situations like your ten percent slope. But basically, in terms of nutrient removal and water quality, there's other reasons to have a wider, a hundred-foot buffer, which I think the planning board probably is not as interested in. But I think water quality is a significant one, and, you know, things like, again, nitrates and phosphorus, which can be from the insurance, is something to consider. And I would ask that that be changed from seventy-five to a hundred, which gives us a little bit closer to what we used to have, but still has reduced it from what we used to have, which I know is problematic for the CBA.
Any member want to make that motion? Then we leave it at seventy-five feet?
Well, I think we should explain what the thinking was.
Well, it's the state, the state has that.
So just, I really, you know, I appreciate you reading it so carefully. So, Sheri, wasn't part of the original impetus for revising the ordinance issues with having a hundred-and-twenty-five foot setback? The code enforcement officer found it really difficult to deal with that. So, I, would you?
Yeah, that was the original request two years ago from the planning board, was to look at reducing that. And, and then you guys got this, the whole word. So, it, you know, went from one thing to the next. But, yeah, that was, that was kind of where this whole thing started. Not that that really answers your question, but, yeah, again, it was a compromise. So, again, you know, the state does have seventy-five foot setback, you know, so why bother having an ordinance if you're just going to go with the state? We have the opportunity, I mean, the state has a lot of competing interests, they have a lot of lobbyists, so when there comes to rules and regs, there's a lot that has to be fought out. And, you know, we have the opportunity to do a little bit better. I mean, because we are our municipality, our town, you know, to, if we want to better protect our water, then we have that opportunity to do that. And we can do that by putting in a hundred-foot buffer.
We did, we did use that source, I know the conservation commission relied heavily on the source that you're, you're referencing, so everybody understood that a hundred feet is, would be the best. I was more comfortable with reducing the number personally, because I know that improvements in septic design have occurred since, you know, over time. And we're a lot better with them now.
But people still have leach fields there.
Existing, pre-existing leach fields, sure. But leach field science and, you know, engineering is, is much better than it used to be. So that was, that was why I felt comfortable, not comfortable, but more comfortable than, relative to the compromise that we had to make.
But it's still dependent on the maintenance of the individual.
Sure, absolutely.
And on the soil type, too.
And on the soil.
Big, big part on the soil type. But the conservation commission did a lot of work on this. I mean, it wasn't just one time they came in, they were back and forth, we had plenty of discussions with them about this.
To your process will be.
And a lot of different things.
And, and I appreciate that. And I, you know, it does need a lot of work to have, to come up with this document. But I just think that, that.
I know.
But you just said it was a seventy-five feet, there's a big loss. It's not even a compromise, it's a loss.
Well, we can keep an eye on it, you know, if there, if it's causing problems, if there's pollution in some, you know, vernal pools, for instance, or something like that, then maybe we can put it back to one twenty-five. It just didn't, it didn't seem that it was doing any good, the one twenty-five feet, for a long time.
And this is, this is for new construction, so it's, it's a, we're really relying on the new technology and so on to, it's not something that we're totally happy with, but it's something that we can get done. And it's a better solution, the whole thing is a better solution than what we had before.
I would say this, this document, yes, reflects a lot of work and good prescriptions. But, again, why bother with putting a seventy-five foot, that's the state. If you want to go with the state, then why bother cluttering up our ordinance with something that's already covered by the state? If you, if you don't want to better protect our resource, then, you know, and waiting until the pollution shows up in the stream next to the neighbor's house? That's kind of like, then you have to clean up the stream as well, or the damage that would have been done. Why bother?
Well, they, we bothered, the conservation commission bothered, I mean, they bothered a lot, you know, they worked a lot of hours over this. And the planning board did too, but they did the lion's share of it. And they came up with a pretty good document. And yeah, there's, there's stuff in there that lots of people don't like, but it's a good ordinance, it's a fair ordinance.
I'm not saying you don't bother with the ordinance, I was talking about seventy-five foot buffer. Again, I think, you know, I do see the work that has been evolved on both sides.
Again, if it's causing problems, then, then you can change it, but I don't see where it's going to cause problems. Swansea has really good filterable soil. You know, it's not hardpan all over the place where you're just getting it running, you know, that far into the surface into a wetland somewhere. It's filtered, most of the part in town, anyway.
Barbara, I want to thank you for the eloquence of your arguments, because they're right on. They're, to a point, what they do is they represent sort of an ideal situation we love to be at. And that's where we got to is where.
Anybody else? Then I'm going to close the public hearing on the wetlands. Okay, I'm closing a public hearing on the wetlands. Okay, so we didn't change hardly anything on there, didn't change any meaning of it. So a motion to proceed with this, and it is the wetlands ordinance, the entire ordinance, to be placed on the ballot for twenty twenty-six would be in order.
So moved, second.
Okay, we'll give Richard the, the motion, and seconded by Victoria. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Okay. Now, we're on to amendment number two through eight, and we're going to do that as one public hearing as well. And we will do the same thing, we'll go through the whole two through eight amendments and decide at the end whether they all should go on or not. So I will open up the public hearing for amendments number two through eight. And again, that reads, actually, we'll read like this. Are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number two as proposed by the planning board to amend this one, the zoning ordinance as follows? And I'm going to go through all those, I'm not going to read that whole thing in front of every single amendment, we'll know what it's going to say there. But anyways, this is the first one, amendment number two, amend section number three, AA, article A3 and A6 to read as follows. And it talks about attached, we aren't changing anything in A, but number three underneath it, where it says, an interior door, this is talking about, I'll just read the whole thing, so we all know what we're talking about. Attached accessory dwelling units, AADU, shall be permitted as an accessory use in all zoning districts that permit single-family dwellings. One attached accessory dwelling unit shall be allowed without additional requirements or for lot size, frontage space limitations, or other controls beyond what would be required. or for lot size, frontage space limitations, or other controls beyond what would be required for a single-family dwelling without an attached accessory dwelling unit." Here's a part that is proposed to change, number three, we're going to be crossing this out, and it says, "An interior door shall be provided between the principal dwelling unit and the attached accessory dwelling unit. A second means of egress from AADU shall be provided." We're getting rid of that. Then, we skip down to number six, and where it says, "Adequate off-street parking shall be provided to serve the combined needs of the principal dwelling unit and the AADU. The principal dwelling unit shall provide two parking spaces, the AADU shall provide one parking space," and we're crossing out, "for each bedroom contained in the AADU." And that is required by HB 577. So, anybody have any comments on that? Nope, not the first time we've read it anyways, is it? Amendment number three, and that will be to amend section three AA, Article B, B6, B point six, to read as follows. Detached accessory dwelling units, DADU this time, shall be permitted, and we're crossing out by special exception only, and it will read, "In all zoning districts that permit single-family dwellings, only one DADU shall be allowed without additional requirements for lot size, frontage space limitations, or other controls beyond what would be required for a single-family dwelling without a detached accessory dwelling unit." We're crossing out detached accessory dwelling, dwelling unit and replacing with DADU. Now, we're crossing out requirements and limitations, and we're also crossing out where it says, "In granting a special exception for the DADU, the zoning board of adjustment must find that," and we're keeping in, "Adequate off-street parking shall be provided to serve the combined needs of the principal dwelling unit and the DADU. The principal dwelling unit shall provide two parking spaces, the DADU shall provide one parking space," and the rest of it reads, "For each bedroom contained in the DADU," we're crossing that part out. And now, again, that's required, state passed some laws there. Amendment number four, amend section four, Article A, 1B, to read as follows, and we're crossing out permitted uses and replacing it with uses permitted. "In the rural agricultural district, no buildings or premises shall be erected, altered, or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except," and we're crossing this part out, "Item moved to Section 4A2, amended March 10, 1998, and we're replacing it with two-family dwelling." In other words, let's see, it's a, it's a use that we're allowing by right. Amendment number five, amend section four, Article A2G, to read as follows. "In addition to the aforementioned permitted uses, the following are permitted after the issuance of a special exception by the Board of Adjustment." We're crossing out two-family dwelling, "The density requirement for a two-family dwelling shall be three and one-half acres unless connected to a public sewer." Crossing that out. And amendment number six, and this is, it has to do with the, you know, residential use, and this, that was the rural ag, residential this time. "Amend section four, Article B, 1B, and H to read as follows. Uses permitted. In the residence district, no building or premise shall be erected, altered, or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except," and we're crossing out customary agricultural uses, including gardens, nurseries, and greenhouses, and replacing it with two-family dwelling, "And the density requirement for a two-family dwelling in the residence district shall be one and one-half acre unless connected to public sewer." And then H, we're adding customary agriculture uses, including gardens, nurseries, and greenhouses. So, on this one, the board needs to consider about the density part of it. If you put, if you have a one-acre lot with a duplex on it connected to a public sewer, which it allows here, then you're doubling your density for that area there. I can think of a place right here in town, right at the end of what's Holbrook Avenue now, the sewer goes right out to there and stops, and there's a lot of land out there that at some point is going to be developed. So, if this is left in, I'm thinking that you could just go right out there and, connected to a public sewer, you could circumnavigate the zoning, the density, which is one-acre lots per household, and you could have two households on a one-acre lot connected to public sewer, and the public sewer, at this point, would not probably support it. But, I'm suggesting that it stay in special exception so that that part of it is addressed before a development goes in about the, the requirement of the one-and-a-half acres unless connected to a public sewer, so it can be looked at at that point, and you wouldn't be able to completely circumnavigate the one-acre, one-household density there. Did I explain that properly or not? Did I lose you or?
Yeah, you're saying that the sewer, basically, we don't have the capacity at this point.
We don't at this point, but at some time, you know, they could still, you know, come to the planning board, site plan review, and then they could find out that the sewer does not have the capacity, wouldn't have done that work, which, in my opinion, would not be fair to them. If they have to go to the ZBA first to see if they can put up two-family homes in, in we'll say, that area over there, they'd find out then and there probably that the, the sewer would not sustain it, and they wouldn't have all that work into designing whatever it is they're going to design there, and they would know there was single-family homes instead. I'm saying leave it as it is. I don't know, what's the rest of the board think about that?
I think you...
It seems fair, fairness to developers.
I think you make a sound argument, you know, specific to that area, but, I mean, it's real, so...
It is real, yeah, and, I mean, I don't know if any developer coming in, developing that land is owned, you know, by farms over there, and it may or may not, but...
You don't know.
It, it does allow somebody to, to double the density in the resident zone, if, if it's by the sewer, and you got that extra level of protection there to go through the ZBA. So, if that's the case, then we, then we did not vote to put that one on, then the amendment number seven underneath it, we would have to do the same, because amendment number seven gets rid of, I'll just read it here, amend number seven, I mean, four, Article B, to B, to read as follows. "In addition to the aforementioned permitted uses, the following are permitted after issuance of a special exception by the Board of Adjustment," and we're going to cross this out, "Two-family dwelling density requirement for two-family, two-family dwelling be one and a half acres unless connected to public sewer." And again, if you're on a public sewer, it could go down to one acre. So, I'm saying we leave that there, and we do not do anything on that number one.
And of course, I, I'm going to push back just a little bit, I, because, because I, I disagree, that I, I still think we can make this change, and it'll just simply be caught at building permit stage.
And be caught where?
When they apply for a building permit, or when they do a pre-app with the building inspector. So, it, it will be caught, it'll just be caught at a different stage in development, so that, that, that's just my piece on it. It will be caught just at a different stage, and then we won't have to waste money on a zoning board application, where it will be caught under item four on the special exception review, because they won't have adequate facilities available, which is fair, but I still think it's an unnecessary hurdle, it's going to be caught at building permit. So, I, that's just my piece on it. But I, I accept, obviously, whatever you guys decide.
All right. Well, what are we going to do? I'll start at this side this time. Oh, we start over there, we start over here. Mark, what do you think?
I think we leave it the way it is.
And so, yeah, leave it the way it is, meaning, yeah.
As amended right now. So, keep it what we have in here.
Keep what we have currently and not put this amendment forth.
Correct.
Okay, I've got that. Victoria?
I agree.
Same with you. Brandon?
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Agree. Richard? Yes? Mark?
I agree.
Yes, okay. So, if that's the case, we can cross number one, I mean, amendment number six, and amendment number seven off. Brings us to amendment number eight, and that would be amend section three, Article Q1, to read as follows, and this has to do with parking, "Off-street parking shall be provided as shown in the following table," and it shows one-family dwelling and two-family dwelling, and we're crossing out two spaces per unit and putting in one space per unit. Again, we're required by the state legislature to do this anyways. And then, next one would be multifamily dwelling, and we're crossing out one-point-five spaces for first bedroom, plus point-five spaces for each additional bedroom, and we're replacing that with one space per unit.
That's required.
Yeah, we're, we aren't going to get around that one.
The thing is, even if these don't pass...
Yep.
It's a matter, it's still a lot.
Yeah, so that was our last one.
I have a Cordell note, too, whenever you guys are ready.
Okay. Any other discussion on those? I'm going to keep the public hearing open, any other discussion? Nope? Jane? Nope? I thought you were, okay, Adam, what did you have?
So, Cordell, Cordell had a, he had a good suggestion, he looked over the amendments, he confirmed that they were all sound, and he did have one suggestion, though, he would combine amendments four and five. So, we removed amendment six and seven, he, he would have also combined those, but now he, he wants to combine amendments four and, and five into a single amendment. That way, if one passes, one fails, you don't run into the weird situation where it's kind of wonky. And the way those are combined, it's, they're literally just glued together, you, you just remove the language, amendment number five, "Are you in favor, blah, blah, blah." So, amendment number four, I, I'll read out in its entirety.
Yep, yep.
The new amendment number four, we'll read. "Are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number four as proposed by the planning board to amend the Swansea zoning ordinance as follows? Amend section four, Article A, 1B, to read as follows." One, you're crossing out permitted uses, writing uses permitted to keep it consistent. "In the rural agricultural district, no buildings or premises shall be erected, altered, or used, and no land shall be used for any purposes except," crossing out item moved to section 4A2J, amended in March 10, 1998, and then two-family dwelling, and then right below that, amend section four, Article A2G, to read as follows. "In the aforementioned permitted uses, the following are permitted after issuance of a special exception by the Board of Adjustment," and then item G, you're just crossing out that entire sentence. So, it's literally just the two glued together.
That's a good suggestion.
Yep.
That's a good one. What's the board think about that?
Yes.
Everybody, yes? Yeah, that's a good suggestion, so...
Yep.
So, then in the motion, we're done with public hearing, I think, right?
Hey, I, I want to read, I want to read my memo, just, just because I want to get this across on the record, so, if, if anybody comes across the recording or the minutes, they have some sort of expectation for what I will be proposing going forward in future years, if you guys don't mind.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, please.
I didn't hear your last, you, you mumbled a little bit there, I didn't hear you, go ahead, read it.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a mumbling, sorry. So, this year's proposed amendments four through seven, now four and five, would allow two-family homes in the residence and rural agricultural districts by right. This represents a modest but meaningful step forward to reducing regulatory barriers to diverse housing options. It directly supports objective number two on page ninety-seven of the master plan, which this board adopted on June ninth, 2022. You all have that in your, in your packet, I'm not going to read the entire objective, but these amendments directly support that objective. Action one will be underway in 2026 through an ordinance review and planned roundtable sessions. And I guess I have to read action one now. Uh, action one is a, conduct a housing assessment to better understand the community's future housing needs. And action two is review land use regulations and identify barriers for housing development. Action two dot ties directly to the proposed changes in the 2026 warrant article. Allowing two-family housing is a small but necessary step toward eliminating the outdated, heavy-handed regulations that restrict anything other than single-family homes. Opening the door to two-family homes in the residence and rural agricultural district gives developers more workable options on Swansea's already large lots while still maintaining the community's rural character. The planning board adopted the master plan with the intent to actively pursue its short, medium, and long-term goals, not just acknowledge them on paper. Following through on these commitments is critical to building and maintaining public trust in the planning process. A master plan reflects years of research and community input, it cannot be just set aside once adopted. Finally, achieving specific goals should never be seen as a finish line. Milestones should drive continued progress, not signal that the work is complete. Cheshire County has a well-documented and urgent housing need, as shown by studies conducted from the city of Keene, Southwestern Community Services, New Hampshire Housing, and others. As long as that need persists, we have a responsibility to keep advancing solutions. Checking a box is not enough, and these amendments barely touch the demand for, for diverse housing types. So, in the years ahead, we must engage seriously in discussions on infill development and adaptive reuse as part of a comprehensive long-term strategy. So, please, next year, expect some conversations from the planning department on adaptive reuse and infill development, because I think that's important in Swansea. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else, anything for the public hearing before I close it? Nobody out there, I guess? Nobody over here, nobody over there?
I'll just add, and a lot of input from the public as well, with the meetings that you're planning on having, I think those are important.
Saturday afternoons, I think, with food.
Then I'm closing the public hearing, and the motion would be to move amendment number two, amendment number three, and combined amendment number four and five, and amendment number eight to the warrant and ballot for the 2026 town meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Michael, is there a second?
Second.
I think Mark beat me to that one.
All right.
Second by Mark.
Not on purpose.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Okay, good. That will move along to the warrant, and, let's see, did they permit there? So, unless there's anything else for the good of the order, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion to adjourn by Brandon, second?
Oh, thanks.
By Mark, okay, then, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, and we're done, thanks.